Good evening and welcome to the May 1st, 2018, meeting of the Gilderland Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is our high school student representatives' report.
Good evening everyone, I hope your day's been going good. So I'm gonna start with some school news. The National Honors Society induction will be on May 16th at 6:00 PM. The junior prom will be held on May 19th from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And Wednesday, May 23rd is the Orchestra Music Festival where, if you don't know, is where hundreds of instrumentalists here in our district Gilderland will come down here to GHS and perform. And May 3rd is a spring concert for select music groups and for non-select ones, the regular ones, will be on May 31st. AP exams will be starting this month and so with student government, I got some news for that. We are working on solving the internet situation where some students in our district, well in Gilderland High School, are stating that it's, the internet's really slow and we're investigating that, we're talking with the authorities and I hope you got, I just wanted you guys to know that. And also, the Quarter Four interim is ending on May 23rd. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Shawshank, well you should stay right there at the podium if you could. I understand this is the last board meeting of the year where you will be presenting your report, so on behalf of the school board and the whole district, we want to thank you for your very eloquent and informative updates each month, they've been terrific.
Thank you guys.
And we have a little something for you and Ms. Hayes and I are gonna come around and give it to you, so if Dad's got his camera still going.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the showcase of student work. Tonight, we have an AP chemistry, AP chemistry students here this evening.
So Mrs. Sebbiara, I understand you have quite a crew here to wow us with your work. So I'm going to turn the podium to you.
Good evening and thank you for seeing us. And just a correction, these are the Science Olympias.
Oh, okay.
So it is an academic club that would run out of Gilderland and they're going to tell you a little bit more about it.
Okay, very good.
As Ms. Seb said, we're part of the Science Olympiad Club here at Gilderland High School and my name is Helen Yang. I'm a senior here and I'm one of the co-presidents of the club. Yeah, it's called Science Olympiad and our club members call it Scioly, so I'll be referring to it as Scioly. So I've been a part of this club for about three years now and like I've seen the club grow tremendously in both size and performance and like it's really been like my child, so I'm very proud of it and so we're here today to like brag a little bit and to share with you our successes. And like I know that not everyone is familiar with what we do, so I'm just gonna explain it very simply right now. It's like track and field but for science nerds. So like where, just like track, we have a team and where the track and field team goes to track meets, we have science competitions. So, yeah, so as I said, like in the past three years, we've grown tremendously and we've accomplished so much. So when I first joined the club when I was a sophomore, it was, Scioly was in kind of like a rut, like no one knew what they were doing. I didn't know what I was doing. I was just kind of like thrown in and I was like cross my fingers, entered the competition, hoped I could enter at least like five of the questions. And that year, we got like 18th at the regional competition. The following year, I was co-vice president and we decided to tighten the reins a little bit and get everyone like pumped up for the competition and we raised, we rose seven ranks and we got 11th place. And then this year, after like learning a little bit about the logistics and like the expenses that like come with running like a Science Olympiad Club, we decided to cut the team down to one team and then this year, we placed six at the regional competition.
Wow.
So now my co-president, Teresa, will share with you a little bit about the preparations that we did.
All right. Hi, I'm Teresa and I'm co-president of Science Olympiad with Helen and we've been part of Science Olympiad for like the same amount of time, so we've both kind of witnessed this like really remarkable growth of like the club as an organization and as like kind of a home for people who just wanna like develop their skills in science like as a community. So like I just want to tell you a little bit about what we do. So like right from the start of the year, we're already kind of trying to figure out where to put people in terms of the event, like Helen was saying, it's like a track and field event where like where people's strengths lie, that's kind of where we try to direct them. So in the beginning of the year, we like get this manual from the Science Olympiad Organization, which is this like national organization and they give us a manual of like all the events that we have to do that year. So there are like building events where you have to like build a material and like, like this is, I did this mousetrap vehicle with my partner this year where like they give you all these dimensions and all of these requirements and then you like race them with other people around like the suburban council area and like also some other schools in the region. And like then there's also lab events and then there's like testing events. So basically, we start in September by trying to get people to like the event that they want to be in, so we'll have like two partners say like, "I wanna do astronomy" and then we'll sign them up for that event and then basically, we match people up and then for the next couple of months, we train for like the event. So it's basically from September all the way through like early February that we're just preparing for this one big regionals event. And it takes place usually every Friday and it's like two hours that we spend every Friday meeting with our partners and for building events, it's like, you know, constructing the equipment or whatever that you need to do for testing events, it's like we have to like look up PowerPoints and sometimes, you know, get the advice of teachers and stuff like that that are in the science department. And then for lab events, like Ms. Seb always hooks us up with a lot of like nice equipment for that stuff. So basically, we do that every Friday and then we have like a couple cram sessions that are like four hours or five hours long right before the regionals event. And then at regionals, we all go to St. Rose with like all the other schools in the surrounding area and it's just like this crazy environment of just like, it's super inspiring to just see all the people that have worked just as hard as you have and it's like, it's, you know, it's a competitive environment, but it's also so collaborative, like everyone's really proud of each other and, you know, it's hard to sell a club that's just like, "Yeah, you work two hours every week and like, and like you do it for one day", so like it's hard to sell that. But then like when you're in it, like you feel this like intrinsic satisfaction with just knowing like, like I'm in this with people that are just like me and like, like even with this mousetrap vehicle, like it's my baby, like I'm so happy with this, I'm not gonna like, you know, throw this away, I'm gonna bring this with me to college. So, okay. So that's basically what we do. So on to my friend Lila, talking about our environment at Scioly.
I'm gonna try to do this without the crutches. Does everyone feel bad for me already? Honorable board members, teachers, colleagues, my name is Lila Youssef and I've participated in the club for three years and I've been an officer for two. It is my absolute honor to be present here today on behalf of the Science Olympiad Club and to reiterate and stress the underlying theme of collaboration and camaraderie existing within this club. In fact, there's so much camaraderie and collaboration that we were editing one another's speeches until 6:30 today. I probably shouldn't have said that. A general seemingly justifiable assumption would be one that deems me a girl that adores science. I don't. In fact, what stood out at this club more than anything was its teamwork, determination, and cooperative spirit. Perhaps what exemplifies this best is the events that ensued during a regional competition in which my partner and I were given a month to create a binder that we could use during the exam. But as a leading expert in the field of procrastination, my partner and I had 12 hours on the clock to do an enormous amount of work and so we spent, and I kid you not, eight hours on the dock from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM in which as one person took a nap, the other person worked. Perhaps that's why when you enter one of our Science Olympiad meetings, you ask, "What are these kids on?", and the answer is, "Two hours of sleep and a lot of caffeine." But in a lot of seriousness though, Science Olympiad made me learn about a field that I wasn't formally even remotely interested in and it attracted me due to the way I saw its members work together and function not as individuals but as a team. And to my amazement, during my summer cancer laboratory research at Oxford University this summer, I similarly witnessed such collaboration. I may not have understood much of the substance, but I could evidently witness the world's leading experts in the field of cancer working vehemently alongside one another, whether it's through sending lab results to different departments or editing and reviewing medical journals. In summary, Science Olympiad is pretty much a mini version of the Oxford University Laboratory Cancer Research Team, we're just a little less funded. And perhaps of greater prominence than the collaborative spirit is an environment in which you find that every member truly wants to learn and expand his or her knowledge on a respective topic. As we merge all of our ideas into one, we realize that we all have diversified aspirations and interests and yet they don't conflict or hinder one another's success. In fact, they only augment and build upon one another. And so with this inclusion-infused, knowledge-seeking, and collaborative-driven club, we are epitomized best by one of the words of one of the world's most renowned scientists, Kenneth G. Wilson, who in 1982 said, "The hardest problems of pure and applied sciences can only be solved by the open cooperation of the wide scientific community." In Science Olympiad, we recognize that alone, we can do little, but together, we can do so much. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank Lila for that beautiful five minutes of speech. So like she sort of like summed up what Science Olympiad sort of like means to us. I think everybody here who's present on behalf of Science Olympiad has sort of crossed this idea on what Science Olympiad means to us, it's like referring to us as like our baby. So it's like, I have joined Science Olympiad very like recently when I was a junior, but as soon as I have like, as soon as I joined Science Olympiad, I saw this club that sort of like offers an opportunity like to high achieving students to complete and compete in like multiple competitions. And through that, and we like sort of built collaboration and sort of worked on each person's qualifications and what they did best and we sort of worked through that and we honed in on our skills to like perfect that. And Science Olympiad sort of requires club members to sort of go out of their way to seek knowledge. That is one of the traits that we sort of try to master in our club members and I feel like our club members are very good at that. Thank you. Besides that, I would just like to say it's like, Science Olympiad members and Science Olympiad itself has sort of like developed this sort of skill inside of me as well that I have to like go outside of school to seek and further my knowledge. Through, as I went through my junior year, I became very interested in neuroscience and as a result of Science Olympiad, I sort of gathered the confidence and the skills that sort of needed for collaboration in a research institute and a research environment. And as a result of Science Olympiad, I could have the confidence to go into a professor's lab at University of Albany and say, "Hey, I know this, this, and this and I have the confidence to do this, this, and this." And I have, due to Science Olympiad, I can, I showed them that it's like, yeah, it's possible for me to be a high school student and still talk with an undergrad or graduate or like a postdoc and like sort of like go through that. And as a result of that, I feel like I owe Science Olympiad a lot on my interest in neuroscience and how I sort of became connected with the neurology department at Albany Medical and the neurology department at like University of Albany. So that's what like Science Olympiad does best, it sort of makes you go out of your way to seek what you like want to know and go and try to like complete your goal. But one of the things that we sort of noticed while we were at competitions such as like the invitationals and the regionals were that a lot of teams that were present there, a lot of schools that were present there, almost all of them had at least two teams, Team A and Team B, it's like a varsity on the JV. So the JV team would sometimes be like compiled with freshmen and sophomores and the Team A would be compiled with juniors and seniors, so it's like would sort of like move on and it would sort of like create this like competitive environment and like it would give a lot of like people like chance to like grow. But over here, this year, we had to sort of cut that down to only one team because of like the amount of expenses that we had to like sort of pay to get into these competitions. So I feel like we can sort of work on that and also we can sort of work on our faculty in the science department sort of helping Science Olympiad become a better club. There are a lot of science, of course, like the whole thing is science, there are a lot of specific events that teachers in the science department can help us on, like biology teachers can help us on, disease detectives, while physics teachers can help us on like optics. We have tech teachers who like specialize in vex robots and like we can, if we have like an event on robotics, we can seek help from them and like building events and sort of like that. So I feel like if we sort of gather our faculty in the science department to sort of help Science Olympiad, I think Science Olympiad can like achieve the status of like Columbia High School or like Bethlehem High School and I feel like that's, that's going to be soon. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, my name is Bill Guo and I'm a junior. This year, I've been a part of Science Olympiad for the last two years and it's really been one of the clubs that I've definitely poured the most time into and have the most respect for. So I wanted to talk about more plans for the future for next year. Science Olympiad this year is over, it ends usually at the regional competition. So over the past couple of years, we've seen a lot of growth and this is something that I really wanna, I'm going to be the president of Science Olympiad next year and I really wanna push sort of to hold the club to a higher standing. So we've been on a really good upward trend and as a goal for next year, I would like to, we're trying to place in the top three at the regional competition to go to states and that will require, you know, a lot more time and a lot more resources just because of more established schools like Columbia and Bethlehem who have had a really good Science Olympiad program already. Gilderland High School, as far as our clubs go, we don't really have, besides the robotics team, that many academic sort of competition clubs, which is one of, one of my favorite things to do is go to academic competition. So I really wanted to push Science Olympiad to sort of fill this niche in our community, in our high school that we take academic competition seriously, like similar to a sports team where they go to, they have like practice almost every day. As a goal for next year, we would like to really try to make it something established and serious and something that members can, can put a lot of time into and produce a product that they can be proud of.
Hi, I'm James Gu, I'm gonna be next year's co-vice president of Science Olympiad. I've been a member for two years and gonna be for three years. So ultimately, we want to expand the club and make it last. We're gonna be going to the club fair on, I believe, May the 9th and we're just gonna be trying to find interested freshmen and all that. We're also recruiting from senior, like next year's seniors, juniors, and sophomores 'cause we are planning on adding a second team, well, thinking about adding a second team. It's gonna require a lot of time investment and it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty difficult for us, but it's like, we wanna make this club something more than just a science club 'cause we'd rather make it something more of like an institution or a community of learners, like we don't want it to be just kids who are interested in science, like we have artists and musicians, like Helen drew this.
Wow.
Like we just wanna have, not a group of just talented scientists, but a group of talented students who are working together to better themselves and just become, like pursue greater academic opportunities.
Do we have any questions for the, Seema?
I was kinda interested in the idea you were talking about, so Science Olympiad maybe like combining with other clubs like the robotics club and I think there's maybe an engineering club, is that what you were talking about, to maybe fundraise or somehow support each other to go to these different events?
Yeah, we really do see ideas, I do kind of know, almost, right now, I don't think we have it, we're pretty distinct institutions, like we don't, we really operate, you know, independently of each other, but I think that's a really interesting idea to kind of, you know, like one piece of the plan, because I think, like Bill was saying, like it's a lot like sports, really, it's just like you're flexing different muscles, like you're just, it's just a different arena and it requires a particular amount of dedication and also like kind of like a unified goal. Like I'm sure our sports department, like all of our different sports teams are helping it together and talk about like, you know, their plans independently and also their plans as a whole, so I'm sure like, I mean, we don't, we didn't have that in our system, that's a really great idea, we should definitely be.
Are there like any efforts like with, 'cause you were talking about recruiting at even like the freshman level, right, to get into the club, like recruiting like in the spring with the eighth graders coming in so they could start thinking about when they come to high school?
Yeah, that's what the May 9th conference.
Oh, okay, okay.
The problem is that we're kind of on hold right now, just because of like, you know, we wanna spend the most time, like investing time into science and not into funding and because like it takes a lot of time to pay for all the dues, like it's like, you know, upwards of like $400, $500 for dues just to get your.
To my house.
So basically, like we want more people, but right now, we're setting pause, so like, like what happened a couple of years ago is that we like sent it out like, oh yeah, like, I'm in the Science Olympiad, we got like such an influx of people.
We had 45 kids come in.
So many, yeah, and we can only have 15 or 18, so it was just like crazy and I think like it's a lot of untapped potential, like it's so much untapped potential, so many talented kids in STEM that are looking for like an avenue for us to kind of just shine. And obviously, we can't, we can't do it right now, but it's up to like Bill and James and like the people that are coming up in the future years to like make this more of a, you know, encompassing and more of a welcoming institution, just 'cause like, right now, we're limited to 15, so we have to wait till later.
Could they use the mic?
Sure.
So that we can, people at home can hear. Yeah, they can just pass it around.
Yeah, like a couple of you guys mentioned Columbia and Bethlehem having pretty established teams, so I'm just curious, like what do you know or what do you like envision that Gilderland could do to catch up or move in that direction?
So I can tell you like what Columbia does right now, so what, what happens is that there are these kits, hundreds of dollars, like $200 per kit, it's crazy, like, the thing about Science Olympiad that kind of all of us hate the most is that it privileges the communities that have the most funds. It's not entirely about talent and like, that's just the way life goes, I guess, but like, you know, it, there's so much money involved in it. So like what happens with Columbia is that, you know, I'm sure a long time ago, they had so many funds available that they were able to purchase all these kits for each event, like on the Science Olympiad website, they have a kit for every event, for a mousetrap vehicle, like I, me and my partner, we had to find all of these materials on our own from like the Home Depot, but like if you go on this kit, like they just give it to you, like all of them, like all the parts are there and you just put them together and like, you know, obviously that, that kind of robs some of the creativity out of it, but anyways, like the kits expedite the process a lot. So teams like Columbia have had these kits for a while and they also have a lot of teacher advisors, like every like pair of students that's involved with an event will like meet with a teacher advisor who will like help them through the event and like, let's say it's like chemistry, like they'll sit down at each meeting, like how we have every Friday, like two hours, like those two hours would be spent with a teacher, like counseling them on like how to do things and like stuff like that. So we don't have those two main things and that's what makes Columbia and Bethlehem such an established institution, because first of all, they have a legacy and like the older students will pass on this information to younger students and because we're so small, we can't do that. And the second thing is just resources that they've aggregated over time and because this is such a young club, like I'm sure we'll be able to get there at some point, like they've been, Columbia's been doing this for so long, we got started like, like less than a decade ago. So I mean, like, obviously, we're on an upwards trend, but like, these are the things that kind of make Columbia and Bethlehem stand out.
I can add to that, Columbia also has a lot of support. They have Regeneron is there, Albany Molecular is there, they have parental support. We found out that in each of the competitions, 'cause I'm one of the readers, and on each of the competitions, it is former Columbia High School college students who come to run the events. So they, every break, they're in there egging and helping and assisting. And then I worked with parent volunteers, so the community swarms onto this one club. So even if a teacher's not available, there's someone in industry who's helping them, which is what we don't have. So I'm a chemistry forensics teacher, I have expertise in chemistry and forensics, I don't have expertise in physiology, I don't have expertise in physics. So the kids are pretty much on their own trying to research all this material with the little that I can add in there. So that sets Columbia way ahead of us and that sets Bethlehem way ahead of us. We don't have the industry and the resources that they do, so they get a lot of assistance. So what one of them mentioned is that if we could find a way whereby our math, science, tech department could invest some interest and we'll be able to have these kids go to those teachers for that help, but it is a limited week and so I do understand that, but that's what we hope for, to get that assistance.
Barbara, is all your, for Columbia and Bethlehem, do they get any funds from the district or is it all outside people giving them funds?
I asked and the school has a budget for that club, the school has a budget for that club, so they get funded from the school and from the community.
The only reason that they use the sports analogy and, you know, for sports, we certainly put buses up for trips and things such as that, equipment and all that, so that may be some avenue that you may wanna pursue come next year.
That would be pleasant. And we'd greatly appreciate it. Like I'm so proud of us just because like, a lot of, I mean, like when it comes to Columbia and Bethlehem, like, yeah, they have a lot of resources, but we got sixth with nothing. Like we, we had like, with like, with like, okay, like in terms, I mean, like we haven't had as much experience and we were really, we're a really new club, but just raw talent has gotten us so far and like honestly, like regardless of what happens, like I'm sure just the talented students in our school, like they'll make ends meet whatever it is, like whatever, you know, the situation is, we've been able to really pull through, so, you know, we'd appreciate any support, like even if it's just through like advertising our club or something, any, anything it is, you know, it doesn't even have to, whatever it is, honestly, it's just like, I'm just so proud of the students in our school, like they're just so talented in STEM and like, you know, giving them this avenue means a lot to all of us, so.
Barbara. Just a follow-up question, what are the admission fees to get into these contests? You said that there are fees for the kits, but how much, in other words, if you wanted to go to St. Rose, what do they charge you per person, per team, how does it work?
It's per team, so the reason why we had one team was because it's like obviously cheaper to have one team than to have, than to have two teams. I think for INVs, it was like, what, like one?
It costs $500. $500 for INVs and to register into the competition and that for the regionals and then for the invitations, we have to pay 255, so that's just the fees, without even buying the kits that we need.
And the interesting thing is that like for the INVs, it goes to Columbia, so the money that we spend goes straight to them.
Perhaps we should host at some point, have those fees come to us.
Like, can I say something? Yeah, I used to work for Albany Molecular Research, I know of several students here.
Will we give her the microphone so everybody at home could hear her?
Sorry, yeah, I'm James's mother. I used to work for Albany Molecular Research and I know several, there are a couple of kids here, I know their parents also work there, they're very generous in supporting science even, so if you can get the students to have their parents talk to the company, I think they, I mean, it's easy for them to contribute like $2,000, so.
Sure, yep, the microphone.
We always ignore the fine print. I'm just looking at the small lettering there, empowering all students to succeed in the 21st century. So from beginning, like I always tried to emphasize as a school, our core competency, our objective should be. our objective should be empowering our students. And recently, like, I was looking for the second computer science class, like, things like that, which are very basic, we are school here, we are all, like, here because we have to educate our students. I think, Science Club, I'm really, uh, really disappointed that they have to basically beg, like, you know, five hundred dollars, thousand dollars, they have to go after, and, you know, they're not able to compete. This, we know that we're going to talk about the budget in a few minutes. I know, in the big budget, these things are very small. I think we should consider the education-related things as a first priority, because that's what, like, one of the core goals of our school. I think we should encourage, like, corporates, like, companies who can sponsor. We just need to go out, I think, like she told, a couple of thousand dollars, companies will be ready to give for a good cause. And also, school, when we are looking at budget, I think, we know always, we look at last year's budget, we try to cut things, and, you know, we try to come out with something, but these things should be the first priority when we do the budgeting. So, that way, our kids will not suffer just for a few hundred dollars, we are lacking. Not only competition, like, these kids, they go off, they go out and they go to good colleges, and, you know, they become good citizens, and they're going to contribute back to the community. So, I think we should consider that when we go to the budget hearing and see how we can include more budget for things like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
All right, I'm not gonna stand up, but, um, to place it more in context, so, I'm president of the Model United Nations Team here, and the Speech and Debate Team, and we're dealing with a similar issue in which, when we go to conferences, like, we go to Yale, Brown, Cornell, um, even a local one in Shaker, we noticed that a lot of the other teams, and this is speaking beyond the Science Olympiad, but, uh, several schools, not just, I'm not speaking just with regards to the private ones, but the public ones as well, the Board of Education has given a special sector specifically to clubs. And so, when you go into competition, for example, I've done Model UN for four years, in my freshman year, I was slightly discouraged, simply because I saw that other freshmen my same age with the same amount of experience as me, uh, they were given a lot more opportunities, whether it's through the fact that their Board of Ed gave funding specified to bring a speaker who would tell the students what to do at MUN competitions. It places them at a, a great advantage, and so, I think this is speaking beyond the Science Olympiad point, but into all clubs, in which, although talent is a big, and it's a, it's an important aspect, funding can severely be a detrimental factor, and it can hold students down. And as much as I know, it was mentioned before, um, the Board of Education does everything within its power to empower Gilderlin students, and we truly have been empowered, and we truly do appreciate, uh, the work being done. I believe that there should be, um, more budget for, uh, the clubs, just so that way Gilderlin students are placed at least at the same caliber and given the same opportunities, because, as mentioned, Science Olympiad was given a fraction of the, um, of what Columbia has been given. And yet, we prospered and we prevailed, and we did very well coming in sixth place, given not as much opportunity. So, I think, if anything, it proves that there's potential, and that potential needs to be added, added on and augmented upon, and it, and, and the only way to speed that up would be truly through more funding.
Um, and, I mean, like, I think it's kind of a steep thing to ask for, just because it's such a new club, and like, I totally understand if it's, like, not within your budget to pay for a club that's just starting. Like, I get that. I think, like, at least, like, maybe something incremental, like, I think just a little bit of something to support us in our beginning stages could be really helpful, like, even if it's just through support, um, with, like, corporate institutions, like, when we get the backing of the board, that means that, like, we're recognized by the school. And like, it's such a young club, like, we get that, like, we're not gonna ask for, like, what Columbia has, just because, like, it doesn't make any sense, like, it doesn't make any sense to have that, like, right now. But I think, like, if we do this in increments, like, maybe year by year, we, like, reassess the situation, um, we could get there slowly. So, I think, like, maybe just to, like, at least now, maybe the first step could just be to reach, uh, reach out to corporate, um, institutions and, um, look for their funds, and then maybe we could, um, look into the school's budget later on.
So, you're going to supply the letter, like, to the company?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We didn't, we honestly didn't even think about it, so.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda this evening is public comment number one. Linda, do we have anybody signed up this evening? Okay. And so now, we will move to the budget hearing. Neil?
Thank you. I doubt this is gonna be as exciting as what we just heard, but, uh, we do our best to, to follow that fine act, and, uh, great job, students. As part of the legal process, um, the State of New York requires school districts to conduct a budget hearing in between when the Board adopts the budget and before the budget vote, which this year is on May fifteenth, so this is what I'll be talking about this evening. So, the budget proposed for next year, it's one hundred million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. That's about two point four million dollar increase, or two point four eight percent. We're estimating a tax levy increase of two point two percent, and a tax rate increase of one point nine seven percent. With this budget, we are under the tax levy limit, so we need fifty percent voter approval and not the sixty percent supermajority for passage of the budget. Part of the requirement this evening is that we present the budget in three components, the program component, the capital component, and the administrative component, so you'll see a pie chart with the relative percentages for each of those categories. She can imagine, program should be our largest, and it is by far at seventy-five point seven percent, followed by capital at thirteen point three, and administrative at eleven You saw the graphic, now we're gonna talk a little bit about what's in each of those categories, and how it differs from the previous year. So, starting at the top, last year, the program component comprised about seventy-four point five percent of the overall budget. The coming year, it'll be seventy-five point seven percent. And some of the activities and costs associated with that category, a lot of the folks that work directly with children, teachers, guidance counselors, nurses, et cetera, professional development is a key component of that, library, media, computer services, student transportation, co-curricular activities, which we were just talking about, and interstiglasic athletics. The administrative component, it's down point two percent from the previous year, and again, this is more along the lines of the overall support for the educational program, so salaries and benefits for administrators, supervisors, public information, research planning evaluation, central data processing, our tax collection and legal services, as well as school board costs. And then finally, the capital component, that's down a percent from the previous year in terms of the overall budget, but it's our debt payments on our buildings, so capital improvements to our buildings, school bus purchases, tax surgery or tax challenges and court order costs, and then our operations and maintenance department. Terms of our revenue budget, our state aid and Medicaid did increase about four hundred thousand dollars over the previous year. Local revenues are increasing about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We are increasing our use of appropriated fund balance by two hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and that's our, our savings or rainy day funds, this is all what's needed to pay for the budget that I just showed you. And in terms of our tax levy, that's up about one point five seven million dollars. And then, this is a comparison, again, pie charts showing the overall revenues and the overall expenditures, so property taxes are our greatest source of revenues, and that's at seventy-one point seven percent, local sources at two point six percent, and state aid at twenty-five point seven percent. And then expenditures, salaries and benefits, at seventy-nine point two percent. We are a people business, we employ a lot of people to assist students in all capacities. And we have contractual services at six point one percent, O C services at five point three percent, our debt payments at six point eight percent, equipment and supplies at two point three percent, and inter-fund transfers at zero point three percent. In terms of the tax impact, we're looking at, again, a two point two percent increase in our overall tax levy, and that yields an estimated tax rate increase of one point nine seven percent. Until we know final assessment numbers, it is an estimate at this point of what the tax rate increase will be. And if we were to look at the increase in taxes for a home in Gilderlin assessed at two hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars, which is the median assessment, we're looking at a hundred and ten dollar increase on that home between current year and next year. And also, the note at the bottom, we do have an online tax bill calculator, you can go online, you can put in your information about your home and any exemptions that you have, and it will calculate your tax bill for you based on the information that we have at this point. We also have to take into account the tax levy limit or property tax cap, it's an eight-step formula. Vast majority of the expenses are held to two percent or less, and really, the whole point of this calculation is determine a threshold amount, and if the tax increase is less than that threshold amount, you only need fifty percent or more of the voters voting yes to have an approved budget, but if the tax increase is greater than the threshold amount, you would need to have sixty percent of the voters voting yes in order to have a passed budget. And if the budget were to be defeated, there's no increase in taxes permitted. This is the calculation itself for the tax levy limit. Basically, you're starting off with your previous year tax levy, and then we have the ability under the formula to allow for growth, new construction within our school district, and that was an increase of one point zero one one five. Gets us our prior year tax levy adjusted, and then we get to, well, then what happens is you take out capital exemptions, expenses for construction and buses, that comes out of the equation. Then we have our allowable tax levy growth factor, it's the lesser of two percent, or the Consumer Price Index for the previous year, in this case, the Consumer Price Index was just slightly above two percent, so the maximum is two percent that's used in the formula. Then we have, for next year, something new, we have a payment in lieu of taxes, that gets added, or subtracted from the calculation, seventy-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. That gets us to our tax levy limit. Then we get to add back capital expenditures for the upcoming school year, almost one point nine million dollars, and that gets us to our maximum allowable tax levy amount of seventy-two point three million, shown at the bottom. This chart will show you the difference between our tax levy limit and what we've proposed in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, so you can see on the far right, right now, we're sitting at four thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars below the tax levy limit threshold, and because of that, again, we only need fifty percent voter approval rather than the sixty percent, so it's under the tax levy limit. This is a chart going back six years of voter histories, voter approval margins, as you can see, over the last three years, uh, we've been on an upward climb, and, um, you can see the totals for each of the votes, which gone up and down a little bit, but, um, voters are turning out, and they're approving budgets at an increasing rate over the past several Just to talk a little bit about contingency budget scenario under the tax levy limit laws, I mentioned before, um, we have to go to a contingent budget, there are some restrictions that we have to deal with. First thing in terms of a contingent budget is, you get two attempts at it, so if the budget fails on the first attempt, the Board of Education has a choice, they can put the same budget up, or modify it and put it up for a second vote, or they can decide to go directly to a contingent budget. Regardless if it's defeated a second time, the Board of Education has no choice but to adopt a contingency budget at that point, and as part of that, we need to go through and remove what are called all non-contingent expenses. A couple of examples of that is new equipment or community use of buildings, and there's also an administrative budget cap portion of the overall budget as a percentage, and we have to make sure that that's under that limit as well, as part of the contingent budget. So, again, property tax levy may not increase by any amount, so you're held to the prior year's amount for your tax levy, and that would require us, under this scenario, to reduce our budget by one million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, sixty dollars in order to achieve a contingent budget. So, the budget vote proposition and board election, so our budget proposition is for a hundred million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. We have a bus and equipment proposition, one million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars. We have four candidates vying for four open seats, Benjamin Goze, Christine Hayes, Sean McGuire, and Seema Rivera. If you want more information about the budget, please go to our website, and there's a school budget news icon, and click on that, and we have a wealth of information pertaining to the budget on our website. We urge you to please vote, the vote date is Tuesday, May fifteenth, the polls open at seven o'clock in the morning, and they close at nine o'clock at night. You need to vote at the elementary school in your attendance zone. If you're not sure of which zone you are in, you can go to our website, and we have information that allows you to put in your address and find out what's elementary school you would vote at. And that's the end of the presentation. What I would like to point out is, we have developed our annual newsletter, uh, this is a preliminary copy, these should start arriving in homes shortly, so, look for that, it has all the information about the budget, the information that I just shared, and a lot more information pertaining to different aspects of the budget, so please look for that in the mail soon. And with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Neil.
You're welcome.
And now, we move on to approval of our consent items, which include the minutes from the April seventeenth meeting, as well as the April twenty-fifth meeting, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, the personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara, second, Teresa, are there any questions or comments about this? Kathy?
I'll recuse myself from the minutes of April twenty-fifth, because I was not present today.
Okay, I will do the same. Will anybody else?
I'm not.
The, um, special meeting that was in the morning, I think there were five who were there.
Oh, me too, so, wait, yeah, me too, sorry.
Okay. Okay, um, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero with the noted recusals. And now, we move on to information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thanks, Christine. Uh, first, I'd like to start with some more good news items. We'd like to extend congratulations to Gilderlin High School junior James Gu, who won the two thousand eighteen concerto competition. With so many talented students throughout the music department, the choice is difficult and highly competitive. The winner of this competition gains the privilege of a solo, spring solo performance with one of the large ensembles. To win the competition, James played an impressive piano performance of Chopin, Fantasy, Impromptu. He will be a solo performer on May third at the high school spring concert, and will play Chopin's Ballad One in G minor, Opus twenty-three. In addition to his pianistic abilities, James is also a bassoonist, performing in the GHS Wind Ensemble and the Empire State Youth Orchestra. Congratulations to James. And from our art department, some additional good news items. We want to extend congratulations to the following students who had artwork selected for the nineteenth annual high school regional jury art exhibition. They are David LaParco of grade eleven in Mrs. Gockley's class, Evan Carey, Carey, of grade eleven, also in Mrs. Gockley's class, Hyman Wong of grade twelve in Mrs. Best's class, Julia Lu of grade twelve in Mrs. Best's class, Helen Yang, grade twelve, also from Mrs. Best's class, and lastly, Isabella Montico of grade twelve in Mr. Green's class. There were one hundred pieces that were selected from twenty-four districts, the work will be on display at the Albany Center Gallery at four eight eight Broadway, Suite one oh seven in Albany, from April twenty-fourth through May eighteenth, and the opening reception is on Thursday, May third, from five P M. to eight P M., with awards at six thirty P M. And then lastly, also from the art department, I'm happy to share that Allison Williams of grade ten won first place for her photo Eye Speak in Black and White at the two thousand eighteen Media Arts Festival held at Bethlehem High School. The two thousand eighteen Capital Region Media Arts Festival is sponsored by the Capital Area Art Supervisors, the New York State Art Association Region Six, and the Bethlehem Central School District. There are two hundred and twenty works on display from nineteen school districts and a total of one hundred minutes of film. The festival was developed and organized to provide students with a venue to explore and share their creative efforts in the media arts, so congratulations to Allison as well.
Thank you, Damian. Are there any questions or comments for Damian? Okay, and now, we move to superintendent information items, Marry.
Okay, thank you. My first item is to remind everyone that next Wednesday, May ninth, is National School Nurse Day. Since nineteen seventy-two, National School Nurse Day has been set aside on a Wednesday in May to recognize our school nurses. National School Nurse Day was established to foster better understanding of the role of school nurses in the educational setting, and this year's theme is School Nurses Advocates for Twenty-First Century Student Health. School nurses lead the way to advance health and support education by ensuring that students are safe, healthy, and ready to learn, and we are certainly most appreciative of the great work of our own nurses right here in Gilderlin. Their medical expertise, caring manner, and commitment to the well-being of our students truly make a difference, and we do want to thank each and every one for all, every, all the things they do each and every day. It's a tough job, but they do it beautifully. My second item is to recognize seventeen Gilderlin High School students and six- My second item is to recognize 17 Gilderland High School students and six Gilderland High School educators who were recently honored the 21st Annual Capital District YMCA Student and Educator Awards Program that was held last week on April 24. Student honors those who have made outstanding volunteer contributions to their communities. Gilderland was proud to have 23 honorees. I'll tell you that we dominated the room at the Appel Inn, and it was a challenge to take the photo of everybody. So it was a wonderfully proud moment. But the students who were recognized were Jasmine Carr, Kaylee Chamberlain, Gillian Crichton, Elizabeth Dollard, Sophie Girkachov, Matlin Gross, Henry Lee, Thomas John Bonathan, Grace Levine, Travis Morrow, Tasneen Nena, Matthew Ramo, Natalie Russo, Dakota Stott, Sunal Swain, Alexa Thompson, and Grant Visker. We also had a stellar class of educator honorees. Brenna Autry, a high school English teacher, Mr. Tom Lutzick, our high school principal, Ms. Joan McGrath, our high school business teacher, Mr. Jonathan Okuma, high school reading teacher, Mr. Bernard Rahman, high school science teacher, and Ms. Annette Sabiara, who was just here, one of our high school science teachers. It was a great morning and a wonderful opportunity to really recognize community service among our students and our educators. So it was a great morning. And lastly, this is a tip of the hat to Lynn Severance, our Assistant Superintendent for HR, who with a team of worker bees put together yet another successful job fair. On Wednesday, April 18, 2018, Gilderland hosted the fourth Capital Region School District Job Fair. We had 40 school districts and other organizations who participated, close to 300 candidates who came to submit applications and participate in brief interviews with representatives from participating schools. Feedback, as always, from all involved was excellent, and everyone appreciated the opportunity to connect with potential employees and future employers. So Lynn and her team of co-planners all did a ton of work to contribute to the success of that event. So we're really pleased to be the host and created quite a reputation for job fair excellence in the community. So thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Marie?
Yep. How wonderful it is that we have it here. Why? Because we have it here, we get first dibs next year?
We have it here because Lynn came up with this great idea four years ago to host a job fair.
Right.
And it was small.
Right.
And then word got out, and it got bigger and bigger and bigger. So I think we now effectively have a monopoly on it. Is this correct, Dr. Severance?
Yeah. My colleagues are incredibly happy to come and have us do all the work. No one has expressed any interest in hosting it themselves. So we're happy to have everyone.
They can't sell us to have it here, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We have the longest line, without a doubt.
Every year.
Every year. So.
Nice.
We're quite proud of that.
Yes. And we should be.
Thank you. And now we move to Board President information. There's several items this evening. But before we get to that, I would like to recognize that tonight is Alan Simpson's last meeting with us because it's the last meeting before the election. And I want to thank Alan for coming back and for all of the hard work that you've done and for your insight. It's really appreciated. And we enjoy working with you, and I know that I'll miss you. But I want to thank you for that. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything or just?
Stepping up, Alan.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Enjoy your Tuesday evenings.
And now with that in mind, the first item that I have this evening is related to the upcoming Board of Education election, which is scheduled for May 15. The deadline for Board of Education candidates to return their completed petition was April 16, 2018. There are three three-year terms on the board that expire June 30, 2018, and one two-year term that expires May 15, 2018. The names of the candidates and their order on the ballot will be as follows. Christine Hayes, Sean McGuire, Seema Rivera, Benjamin Goze. Candidates do not run for a specific seat on the board. The individuals with the four highest vote totals will be elected. The candidate elected with the lowest total vote serves for the two-year term of office and will begin their term May 16, 2018. The three-year terms will run from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. The two-year term will run from May 16, 2018 until June 30, 2020. The next item relates to voter registration. The public vote on the school budget vote and Board of Education election will be held on Tuesday, May 15. Voter registration is required in the Gilderland School District. To vote, you must be 18 years old, a U.S. citizen, and a resident of the Gilderland School District for at least 30 days prior to the vote. If you are not registered with the school district or the Albany County Board of Elections, you must do so prior to the vote. The district has established registration dates for residents to vote at the May 15 budget vote and election. You may register anytime between 8:30 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. at any of the elementary schools or from 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. at the district office on the following dates, Thursday, May 3, Monday, May 7, and Tuesday, May 8. You may also register with the Albany County Board of Elections during their normal business hours, which are Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. If you are not sure which elementary school to vote, please refer to the webpage link called School Budget News and use the quick link on the right labeled Voter Absentee Ballot Information. You can see if you're registered and where you vote in school elections. The next item relates to the proposed 2018-19 Board of Education meeting dates. And you all have an attachment here to take a look at. I will note that there is proposed one departure from our normal Tuesday meeting schedule, and that's February.
11.
It's proposed that we do it on Monday instead of the Tuesday.
Why?
That's because of me. That's the week of the AASAA conference. And next year, it's in Los Angeles. So it'll be a full day of travel. And I would rather be here in person than over the magic lines.
Okay. I thought maybe it was Abraham Lincoln's birthday.
No. Now, this way, if we did the meeting on Monday, if it works for everybody, then I would fly out Tuesday morning to get there for the meeting, which will start Wednesday morning.
Well, that's good.
And it's my last year.
Glad you saw it that far ahead.
Yes. It only took me six years to pick up on it.
Why is the April 1 to 17, a Wednesday? Do you remember that?
Um...
Yeah, that looks like the Bozies meeting.
Oh, that's probably the, yeah. Vote on the Bozies.
Bozies budget vote and election at 8:00 a.m., yes.
Is July 3 this the reorg meeting?
Yeah.
And that works for everybody, like the day before July 4?
It doesn't, I won't be able to be here.
I mean, I could probably be here, but is it possible to switch it so everybody? I don't know if you're here the Thursday, like the day after.
No, we're gonna be away that whole week.
Is it regular start time at 7?
And we have to have it fairly early, right?
Yes, by a certain?
It has to be by the 15th.
Oh, not till the 15th, okay.
The following week is my other conference where I'm out of town. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, I can't do it all.
Is Monday better?
Is Monday better?
It won't make any difference.
I'll be away, I'll be on last day.
In terms of the 3rd, can anybody say unequivocally, yes, I will be here? Or?
You mentioned Monday, the 2nd. That might be better for, you know, people who are anything. I don't get back until that day at night.
Only just those two days, but I don't know, maybe nobody else has. I just thought sometimes the day before July 4 in the evening, people are busy, but maybe nobody's busy. I don't know.
I have it in my calendar already, so that was good. Well, our whole family is away that week, so I...
That's fine. I mean, I'll come back.
Should we go around and see?
Sure.
It could be any day.
I guess. We can start. Teresa, would that day work for you?
Of the 3rd? As of right now, yes.
Would the 2nd?
Either one wouldn't make a difference.
Or the Thursday?
If we're gonna go away, then we're gonna go away. If we're not, then we're not. So I don't think it matters.
Barbara?
Thursday would be fine. I prefer that, actually, if it was more...
Thursday's what, the 5th? I'd prefer Thursday also. I'll be back.
Okay. I will be around. Tim will be around. You will be around. Judy, you're away that week?
Yeah.
But you're back by then.
Ben, are you?
I'm back on Monday night.
I can come back whenever.
Don't say that.
I'm gonna be around that weekend, but I have to come back.
Would it be better later in the week?
I think Monday would be better for me, but I can work with that Thursday.
Okay.
George.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah. And then we can reach out to Sean.
One, two, three, four, five, six, maybe seven.
I'll be in there.
Who can't do the Tuesday that we had to go to?
I can't. Well, I can't do it anyway.
You can do any of them. I can come Tuesday. I didn't want to throw a wrench into it. I'm just saying that it sounds nice, but then when it gets closer to July 4, sometimes people make plans the night before July 4.
Thursday might be better.
Maybe you don't, I don't know. I'm just saying.
Well, when we set the date, I put it in, so I'd make sure I didn't. But we're gonna switch it.
I mean, would earlier be better? Is that?
No.
Okay. That would be worse. Okay. All right.
Well, I mean, I'll accommodate.
There's a quorum.
For which day are we now talking about?
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday?
Oh, we're talking Thursday. Okay.
Thursday, the 5th.
That works for me. Okay. Thursday, the 5th. Okay. And we'll ask Sean.
Yep. We'll have to reach out.
Thank you.
All right. And now we move to the Board of Education Policy Review. There's two items on here for a first read this time. Barbara, did you want to make any comments on these?
I just want to make a comment on the first one.
Sure.
That was brought before you the last time, and it's just a few minor changes. So I don't know if you want to move that down to an action item or leave it there.
Um...
If you take a look, there wasn't that much in the way of changes. Kim Blaseyak had asked us to take a look, you know, at it, and we changed the line or two.
Correct. Both fast.
Right.
Once the regulation.
Regulation is at the bottom.
Once the policy.
But I'm comfortable moving it down if everyone else is.
Now, with regard to page 2 under Declassification Support Services, that first sentence where you removed the who, should you have removed the who?
Let me take a look.
Yeah, who should be there? Who have moved, who have been declassified? There should be a who there.
Depends if you're a who will.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Right.
On the second page.
Yeah, we do need the...
Second page.
See, right there.
That was, that was a find by Tim Haran. I don't want to take credit for that.
Good find, Tim.
Yes, definitely. It needs to be there.
What about that other one?
The other one, okay, so I think that is there. Page, page 1, where you crossed out determined and it became determines. I think that S is on there.
Same policy?
Same policy. I'm just...
Yeah, you're right. It is just the D that's out.
Yeah, the D is gone, and it looks like the S was maybe added after, and that's why it was hard to see. But that one's there. So I think the only change is probably that who.
Right.
We can still correct the page.
Man, I'm okay with, like Barb said, moving it.
Moving it down to coincide with the break.
Is everybody else comfortable moving it down? Okay. All right. We'll move it down when we get there.
Just to brush, in order to do that, you only have to suspend the rules.
No, it's already had a first read.
We already did it. We already had a first read the last time.
Okay, but still, we're just still on information. I don't know. I'm asking, but I don't know.
So we're supposed to suspend the rules when we get down there?
I don't think, I think you need a motion to move it to the action items, but it's here, it's already had a first read. We had revisions suggested. It doesn't have to go for another first read. It could go to action, so.
Okay, so just a motion to move this down.
I'll move that we move it down to an action item.
I'll second it.
Second down. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Passes nine zero, so we will move that one down. Barbara, were there any comments on the student transportation regulation?
Uh, no.
Okay. And the last information item that I have this evening relates to Gloria's question at the end of the last meeting regarding a district priorities meeting and then, more generally, the need for a board retreat. We started with one session of a retreat in December with the idea that we would continue on with this work. And so I kind of just want to open it up for a general discussion on that. Does anybody want to start the discussion? Gloria?
We had a rather lengthy discussion at Communications Committee regarding the need, I think vast majority of everybody sitting there felt, there's really a need for us to spend the time and invest the effort to involve the community, involve the staff, and then set some priorities in some direction that we can work from beginning in September. But to use the time in the spring and then our time in the summer to put some, you know, long-range goals in, you know, maybe intermediate goals and then long-range goals, whatever. But really begin working on that piece.
Okay.
So the lack of having that priorities meeting, that's what kind of, I think, spoke to me. Because if we don't start the year with some direction, we really, you know, kind of flounder around. So it gives us a way of communicating to the district office team, you know, kind of a roadmap so that they can work from that. So I think everybody at the Communications Committee was pretty, felt pretty strongly about that, the need for it.
Okay. So the idea would be to have like one or two retreat sessions in the summer months and then the district priorities meeting early in the fall, September-ish?
Well, we definitely can't do something, throwing something together now, I think it's a little bit late in the year. But you're right. We need to, yeah, get our acts together first and then pull, design a way in the fall of involving the staff, the community, and using our connections with Robert, I think would be, I'm sure he's had lots of experience with this, to help us.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Yep, Seema?
I think I said that in the communications meeting too, that I think a lot of our work would be easier to do if we had some goals to align what we do, you know, aligning with the goals that we set early on in the year. And then I know that handbook that we had to review for today, there was like a whole section about planning and goals. So I'm like, oh, if we're gonna invest the time in like wordsmithing and editing this, then we should be following this. So that's just my two cents.
Are you considering having Robert come in the summertime?
Well, actually, I reached out to him and got some dates for June. I thought maybe that would be easier before people go off to do there.
Yeah, for us to do our thinking, because that would be helpful to the district office team over the summer, too. To know where our heads were at.
Very helpful, because, you know, we do a lot of planning meetings with the leadership team over the summer, and it would be a true gift to us to have the board having, you know, the first discussion and pull that together, so I did get some additional June dates evenings from Robert, and we can send these out tomorrow in a doodle, but I know in my update, I gave you the 18th, that no longer works for him, but he gave me 13, 19, 20, and 27, so, and we can send something out tomorrow.
When is graduation, 23rd?
23, 24?
Yeah, so I was thinking. And did you have a discussion with him about what we were thinking, where our heads were at, like where we're looking to go to put together our?
Just very much in general, we were in email back and forth, so some of it was a kind of a follow-up to what we did in December with the discussion of wanting to kind of poise ourselves to engage the community in a bigger discussion, so I think we'd wanna talk with them a lot more specifically, so that in our time together, we absolutely use every minute to get where we wanna go, but sometimes finding the dates is the hardest part of the work. So graduation is the 23rd, so the 13th is the prior week, and then the 19th and 20th.
Which day is your birthday, the 13th?
We can't do the 13th, it's Christine's birthday, and then the 27th is in that week.
After.
Yes. So we'll send those dates around, minus the 13th, tomorrow, and if we can, and we'll reach out to Ben and to Sean as well, and then we can get something together and then sit down and plan with Robert. I think that would be great.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments on this topic? Okay, so now we move to action items, School Business Management. Neil?
The first item this evening is a resolution to approve the General Fund Restricted Reserves Plan for the 2018-90 school year, as recommended by the Audit Committee. The plan was presented for information at the last meeting, and now we're bringing it back tonight for.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Teresa, 2nd. Judy, are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes 9-0.
Next is a resolution to designate May 16th, 2018, at 2:00 p.m. for the canvassing of affidavit ballots at the district administrative offices, and that the following individuals be designated, excuse me, as the College Board of Inspectors to cast and canvass the affidavit ballots, Neil Sanders, Linda Livingston, and Castilla Camiso.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution to canvass the affidavit ballots? Barbara, 2nd. Kathy, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes 9-0.
And finally, this evening, a resolution to approve the agreement with SUNY Empire State College for, to accept students for internship and practicum experience and authorize the superintendent of schools to execute the agreement.
May I have a motion to approve the internship agreement? Seema, 2nd. Gloria, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes 9-0. Thank you, Neil. And now we move to Board President Action Items, which we have a variety of policies to approve this evening. Barbara, did you wanna say any comments on these before we?
No, I think they're sort of self-explanatory.
Okay. May I have a motion?
We're adding one, too, right?
Yep, we added the one from above. A motion to approve the policies. Tim, 2nd. Judy, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes 9-0. Okay, so now we move to Board Committee Reports. Audit, Teresa?
We met on April 25th. We reviewed a couple items. One was the internal claims reports, which is what we just typically do, and just checking to see, just doing an internal audit, nothing of concern. There was a 2017-18 external audit planning and timeline with Weston Company, that is who we approved of continuing on with their contract at the previous meeting, Neil, or was it two meetings ago?
Yes.
And then we discussed a district credit card, so that the district, we, I didn't realize that we didn't have one currently until a few months prior that we were bringing it up, but, so that when anybody needs to book a hotel room or any travel expenses that you need to do, you can use a credit card, which obviously you always need whenever doing, so, but we discussed that, and, did I miss anything?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Business Practices, Kathy?
Yeah, I think I already gave a report on our last meetings, we talked about budgetary items, and I think, as you know, the minutes are available on the portal if anyone wants to get more detail about those meetings, and we have a, let me look at my email, because we just scheduled a meeting June 6th at 8:15 a.m. is our next Business Practices meeting.
Great, thank you. Communications, Gloria?
Oh, yep, we met on April 23rd, we dealt with a number of items. One of the things that Seema mentioned at the last meeting was kind of the idea of maybe having some protocol for when we all get emails from a parent, and then if nobody responds, it kind of sends a wrong message. I think she got that from, at a PTA meeting. So we discussed it at length in Communications as to how to respond to the concerns of parents when they email us. The committee noted that sometimes the full board will receive an email from a community member, and other times, a subset of the board, so we're never quite, you know, sure how it's gonna come through. Sometimes Dr. Wiles is copied in the email, and it's not clear when, if those are answered, and that was the problem, sometimes one person might answer, sometimes nobody answers. Dr. Wiles noted that if the email is addressed to her and the board, that she responds, and then we all get a copy of her response. So the committee recommends that there be a standard response that we, that be sent by the Board President, and emails that come to the whole board as, or a subset of the board, as long as you're included in it, and I think you were gonna draft some sort of a response, and that whenever, so that they, at least the person who emails the board knows that we've received it and, you know, we thank them for their input, and, so that's what we discussed, and I think Marie will draft some language for us.
I think that's an idea.
Yeah. And the other part of our work was regarding the handbook, which is moving along. Tonight, we were asked to bring Section 4 with your proposed edits, so we're gonna be working on that one, 4 and 5, at our next meeting, probably just the 4, because 5 is not due until the 22nd of May, the next board meeting, so you should have booklet 5 as well, that will be the end of it. Tonight, we won't approve, we were gonna approve Sections 2, because we worked on that, and you should all have, you can go on and see that, because they'll be sent out to you. Deb will be sending them out, probably.
You may do it in the Friday packet to keep it.
Okay, keep it all in one spot, so the next Friday, look for Sections 2 and most of 3. We weren't able to finish 3 quite, because we got into lots of discussions regarding that, so you'll be seeing that on Friday, so if you would look those over, and they should now be done, but we won't be finally approving until the end of June, but at least it gets us moving ahead. We felt that there were a few things in Section 3, one on conducting a self-evaluation of the board, since we have never done that before, so we got into a long discussion about it, which we all felt was a good thing, but we're looking at now tools we might use or invent our own, but NISBA does have some ideas, so we're gonna be looking at that. And the other section, expressing opinions about a board member's performance, how we do that, that kind of got us into a whole other realm of discussions, so we decided to hold it there, and then we're gonna go back to those two issues at our next meeting. NISBA does have, as I say, some ideas for us in those, so we're gonna look more closely at those. The two, let's see, then this discussion went on about the district priorities and the need to do something there, so I won't go back into that. We did discuss one change, and Teresa, you talked to me about the word "shall," we will, we have the word "will" in a certain section under visiting schools.
Yep.
That if you were attending a school, that you will, it says you will, a board member will say that they are there as a parent or a board member or whatever, and I think you wanted to change it to "should."
Yeah.
So we discussed that, and we, the committee felt strongly that we should leave it as "will," because we want it to be done, so it wasn't a matter of suggestion, that's all.
My only concern with that was that, in having a conversation at a parent-teacher conference, or whatever the situation may be with a teacher, I've had many of those for my child, I've never said, "Just so you know, I'm here with, just to speak to you about my child, I am a board member," it's nothing, I've just had the conversation with my child's teacher, so that, that was my only concern.
And I think the setting.
Saying "will" is like, "I didn't do that, am I in trouble because I didn't do that?" That was my only concern with that.
And I think the setting that you're in, if you're there for a conference, that kind of speaks to it, but I think the committee felt that it really is something we wanna make very clear to people, that it's something that we would, we think it's very important to do.
Okay.
Because whether you say it or not, they are aware that you're on the board anyway.
True.
You know, and they know why you're there, which is not as a board member, but as a parent.
But I think you're right, when you go as a parent to a conference, I mean, it's obvious you're in that setting, you're there as a parent.
Right.
I don't think anybody's gonna say, "Oh, you didn't say that, you were here as a parent."
Understood.
Thanks. I wanted you to know, we did talk about that, though, and did we get, there were so many doodles, I can't remember if we ever got one on Communications. Did we get a date?
We did, it was today.
June 8th.
June 8th.
June 8th, thank you.
So we actually could finish up the booklet on June 8th.
So if everybody gets their, that would be nice, so I only have two fours back, so I'm missing fours.
I verbally told you mine.
Verbal doesn't count, I need, because I have to give this to somebody who has to type it all, and then five, I've already gotten two for five. You guys are ahead, so please get four and five, you know, ASAP, as quickly as you can. If you could drop it off to Deb at the, you know.
What Deb does is she then puts it all together for us. All of your comments in various colors, and then we sort through.
Then we gotta sort through and see what we think, but if we don't have it on our June 6th, our June 8th meeting, so as many as possible, because after that, well, then we could still make changes till the end of June, but it would be nice if the committee could finish its work.
Yeah, that's at Farnsworth, like the meeting.
Yes, we have the auxiliary conference room again.
Thank you, Gloria.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Gloria, the last meeting that we had with the board in, what do we have it, as Board Issues, Ideas, and Sharing?
Yep.
We discussed, just like Seema had mentioned, regarding parent at the PTA meeting, talking about an issue and not knowing if it's being addressed, what I had brought up at the last meeting regarding when somebody comes in at a public meeting, a public hearing, and says something, or if we discuss something at the section, how does it ever get addressed? Did that get discussed at all?
No, I thought we talked about it then, I remember we said something about it needs to be signed, you know, if it's a topic that needs to be assigned to a committee, that should be done right then at the meeting.
So then, at the meeting from then, from this point on, that's what we'll be doing?
Well, I would think, we can't deal with it when it's in public comment, but later on, when it's board time to share at the end, and we could, I know Barbara sometimes uses that time to say, "Well, the parent spoke," or "Our parent spoke about this."
That should be addressed at this.
Well, I think that's a good time to say, "It's important enough, five of us think it's important enough, then we should maybe assign it to a committee," so, like, you're right, it doesn't get lost.
Right. Just like a checklist.
It is in the handbook, it's in one of the sections.
It's in one of our sections, so we will be.
I think one we just reviewed.
Once we start using, yeah, getting comfortable with the wording of some of these things, it'll take a while, but it is in there.
Okay.
So when it's all done and edited, we're gonna get a copy of like, this new thing.
We'll even do a hard copy.
Instead of a parliamentarian, we're gonna have a handbookarian, that's gonna go, "We didn't follow."
Okay, thank you. And now, policy, Barbara?
We're meeting again on the 21st.
Great, thank you. Public comment number two, Linda, did anybody sign up? Okay, and now we move to Board Issues, Ideas, and Sharing, does anybody have anything? Judy?
I have a very minor question. I noticed, I don't know, today or whenever I was reading it, that at the top, it says "Roll Call." Do we ever, we don't do a roll, it says "Call to Order, Roll Call."
Linda just takes attendance.
I think Linda does it automatically.
Oh, you do it, okay, it just seems to me that. Present. She just does it.
Yeah, okay, if it's done, it's nothing that we do or that we see anybody doing.
Thank you, though, that was a good question.
It wasn't, it was sort of silly, but looking at it, I thought, you don't say, "Judy, are you here?"
Where's Judy?
Oh, I have a question for you.
Yes, Seema?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I have a quick question? So the PTA meetings that are coming up, there's a, is there someone from DOT going to all of them?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We got an, I think some of us got emails about the NISBA convention, the registration is opening in July, I think 15th, so I think that's something we should talk about, I know Judy and I were interested in going, but if other people.
Where is it?
It's in New York City.
Oh, yeah, back in New York.
Yeah.
Is it in October?
Three days, October. I think it's 25, 26, and 27.
It's late in October again, yeah.
25, 26, 27, so it's just something to be thinking about and.
It's always invigorating to go and talk to people and get ideas and listen to the speakers.
Get inspired.
Yeah, it really is, you come back feeling, I always come back feeling great from one of those, so.
So, if, for the time I know, sometimes it's not possible.